Seeing as five o'clock, I have to open up the meeting. Please join me in welcoming Pastor Sari, you know, for coming in and, you know, giving us tonight's invocation.
Okay.
Please join us in prayer.
Yeah, can we stand? Not too many of us here, but. Lord, we thank you for this night, Lord. We thank you that you're with these board members, giving them wisdom to deal with whatever is they need to deal with, being with the audience, whoever that might be, Lord, giving them wisdom and understanding to whatever the decisions that come about with this board, Lord. May they be wise as serpents and gentle as doves, Lord, and, and just have all the answers they need from you, from above, and we just thank you and praise you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
Oh, you do the pledge, are you?
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so, action-packed agenda this evening. Have hard keeping this one under control, I think.
We have a good chairman.
Yeah, we have the Cascade Road request for town acceptance. And then we have a discussion about the building department. Updates that have been made. And a little bit of roundtable discussion, possibly before we hear from the fire department regards to the new command vehicle request. Again, that's continuation. So with that, Lee, good to see you.
Yeah.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, we hadn't, you know, spoken about this again, you know, as a board, so, you know, probably open up it with some of that discussion. First to find out, you know, where everybody's heads are at with this. Jason?
Yeah, I took a drive down there. I think in summary, I would say, you know, with the information we got last time. Input from Peter and planning board, it seems like they have built the road to the specs they were asked. I think with the bond, there's no reason not to accept the remaining five hundred something feet.
Yeah, yeah, I've come to, you know, similar opinion and looking at the condition of it, not too bad, but a little bit concerned with just going over it with a top coat after the winter, you know, just as that, you know, the base seems like it's already been, you know, beat up a little bit. And what's gonna happen during construction potentially, you know, and then through mud season as well, so I don't know, you know, what we could do for consideration of that, like maybe like a reassessment of, you know, the base.
Yeah.
Before it gets hot coated.
Did any of you speak further with Peter somewhere?
I didn't, I just read his report.
So he?
He was on vacation last week.
Was he coming tonight or not?
No.
You would invite him? I thought you would.
He has, um, he has to go to, um, South Dakota.
So, he wanted to see it, you know, just grind the base when we actually go for it, you know, when we finish it up.
Yeah.
So pulverize the base and lay it back down as, you know, as gravel basically.
Yeah.
Then base it and then top it.
Oh, alright.
So that's the, I gave you a quote for that last time, like for bond.
That was included in?
That was included, if you read number one, it says, pulverize existing binder, utilize it instead of, you know, everything you grind up, we lay it back down instead of hauling it away. And then grade compact, machine tape, two inch binder. And then he's broke that pricing out and then the top coat. Inch and a half top on there. And so the, it was twenty-eight-five to grind it up and grade compact, put the binder down and then nineteen grand to do the top coat. So those two numbers would be the total value for bond or whatever you want to ensure it gets completed.
Okay.
But I know in, Deb, you talked to Pete as well, I mean, he he indicated what I feel is the right way to do it is just to live with what's there until we, you know, build out those five lots and then then do the road and then, you know, and obviously you'll have the bond as surety.
Yeah.
Instead of us doing it and you accepting it as this finished road and then we gotta build five houses and we get a truck all kinds of, you know, material and equipment over it.
Yeah, yeah, for some reason, I didn't, it seemed like that quote didn't include the pulverizing before.
The original, I had presented the original one, I think, way back before Pete inspected it.
Okay.
And then, you know, that was just the top coat.
Yeah.
And that, I think it's in some of the notes or minutes reflected that number around twenty-six grand-ish or whatever. But to pulverize it was, you know, the additional, obviously it costs more to take, take it right down now.
Yeah.
But I'm willing to do that and I understand why, you know, I mean, it's, it's got some, like, you know, it's been there for a while. It's stable, which obviously I'm pleased with, but you know, if you work really close, as Pete pointed out, you do have some kind of alligator fissures and stuff, you know, small, they're not big cracks, but it's, you know, that's what happens over time, you know, long enough, so.
Especially when it's not maintained.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's not been getting regular traffic and everything, so.
And what does the total bond come to?
If I could just.
Twenty-eight?
Oh, it's twenty-five.
And then plus another nineteen, so forty-seven thousand five hundred.
Yeah, forty-seven five.
Did you get a chance to take a ride over or anything?
I'm fine with it. The only question I had is it did come up at one of the meetings about checking to see the depth of what's there now. To, to do some test holes in it.
Yeah, but if they're grinding it, that would be.
I guess that would be just a moot point, yeah.
Well, unless you're really looking to get down into the base, like what those base layers were or are under there.
I mean, there should be, what, four, four, four and a half, five inches worth in there.
Damn, I can't remember offhand, you know, what everything is, like the specs and.
It's on, I have it on, it's on the plan right here.
Yeah, and then that was part of what the planning board had said was, you know, that you, you know, a rational person could, you know, come to the conclusion that that section was also done to town specs as well.
Yeah, and I personally, and I think Peter would probably agree, I think the fact that it's been there as long as it has, sort of, it speaks for itself. Meaning it's built right as far as there's no big sink holes, there's not, I mean, you can drive by, you've seen it if you went up there.
Yeah.
It's pretty stable for how old it is.
And nobody's actually used it because it was gated off, what?
Yeah, we've ran bigger stuff than loader, because we've stockpiled all the loam on the fire cul-de-sac lots.
Okay.
So we've ran heavy equipment loaders and all that up and down, up and down the lot, trucks hauling the material up there. So it's got a lot of traffic, but I'm just, you know, I mean, time don't lie in water and whatever, and if there's you know, poor drainage, poor gravel, it just end up, you know, it ends up going to pot, you know, pot holes.
We know that.
Yeah.
We see it on many.
So I'm saying, like, we could, when we pulverize it, whatever that day is, I mean, obviously Peter could come up and, you know.
He could dig down and see.
That's what I'm saying, you could start playing around to look at the grabbles or whatever, but I mean.
It does, I believe that's true, it speaks for itself.
Yeah, and it was exactly done to the rest of the standard, you know, the rest of the road was all done together.
Are you expanding the development?
Uh, no, it's just kind of a little fluke where when the majority of the road was accepted back in like twenty fifteen, the cul-de-sac end that kind of serves five lots was just gated off and
Yeah.
I don't know, I feel like it was maybe a bit of laziness or somebody just didn't include it in there. And the minutes from then, when the selectmen accepted it, it excluded that part beyond the gate, so it, we're kind of in uncharted territory where most roads are accepted all at once, you know, so it's just this little piece to get it finalized there.
Yeah.
I think it, you know, probably because it wasn't gonna be being used. Yeah, yeah.
It was, nobody could find minutes explaining that.
Yeah, I have the minutes of the night of approval, but, and it does mention excluding beyond the gate on Cascade, which.
Which is only the selectmen's minutes, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so that, I mean, in the planning board minutes, you would think that's where you'd see why, but nobody could find it.
I didn't even try to find it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept Cascade extension in turnaround with forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars as a surety to complete road construction, to include grinding existing binder, grading and compacting, adding a two-inch base coat next season. And then an inch and a half top coat the following paving season. So we like to let it winter over one season and then go. If Peter wants to make adjustments to that, he can let the board know too.
I'll second that.
So how would we, um, not then, you know, jump in there? So at what point would we consider acceptance when he would actually, you know, like take over snow removal and stuff like that?
That's what we're doing now.
But I'm just saying, would it be immediately effective, basically, and then the bonds given you surety that will complete the road to the standard? Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to be, like, clear on exactly the steps or timing of everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any specs on as far as the bond, like the form?
Um, I would have to talk to Carlene, I think, about that.
Okay, if you have any, like.
She's the only, yeah.
You know.
I, I would never.
Acceptable forms or, you know, whatever the.
Or maybe the planning board may.
Yeah.
I've never, since I've been here in ten years, we've never done a bond, so they were all kind of existing.
What is it we did with, um, Kennebec?
No.
Was that a bond or?
Not Kennebec, but the, are you? Al Drive.
Kennebec Court.
It seems like there was some money that was held. Was that an escrow instead of a bond or?
Well, the, yeah, the bonds are in escrow.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, you can get a bond, like, through a bonding company, it's almost like buying an insurance policy type of thing. Or we could literally put up the CAF, like a cash, you know, like, bond that you would, I don't know how you would, you know, hold it, if you have such accounts to hold it.
Yeah, well, the next week or two, we'll have all the.
Just give me clarity on exactly.
Yep.
What you want our?
In the.
And there's a planning board member.
There is one.
Yeah, so you're all set for this evening, unless you have anything else for us, W will be in touch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll probably be heading out to, unless you need me for something else?
No, that's fine, we're heading onto the building part.
Um, oh, yeah, well.
Do you have any input on how things are going building-wise?
Actually, yeah, that's, that's right, I was gonna stay for that.
Yeah.
I could give you a copy of this, because I have my own copy, you can follow on our discussion.
Yeah.
Of course, I'll have to find it. I should still.
I can make it on a copy.
I had it all marked up too, and I think I left it in my other town report.
Oh.
Oh, well.
Do you want to make another copy or share this one?
Just, uh, let me, let me, just a second.
Okay.
I think I remember my odds, but.
But I don't know.
Alan, did you want a copy?
If you have one.
I do, I just pulled it up on my, on the old computer here, so just in case you couldn't find it, yours.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Was Pete, uh, coming in or?
No, you had said you can't make it on Tuesday night.
Oh, that's right, yeah, he's at school. So, uh, any building inspector type meetings or anything will have to take place outside of our normal night, uh, because he's gonna be in continuing ed of some sort until January. And the class nights are Tuesdays and Thursdays every week. I'll start right out, you said you had some stuff marked up, did you have?
It's a couple pages in, you know, I'm not sure how you wanna
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go with your notes first if you want.
On page three. On the violation penalties.
Yeah.
I just thought we should discuss a hundred dollars a day. So if somebody starts work without a permit, they will assume assume have a cease and desist issue. And then they will have to go file for a permit and they'll have to pay double the permit fees. If I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah.
Then from the day of the cease and desist, am I reading this right, that they will be fined a hundred dollars a day until a resolved or an agreement is reached with code enforcement officer? Oh. Seems kind of steep. If it went a week, seven hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And sometimes, just trying to work out an agreement, like in the middle of working out an agreement, yeah, that's where I, maybe I'm reading it wrong, is that how you read it?
Well, uh, you know, it's pretty black and white until an agreement's reached, but, um, I don't know his thoughts on how he would carry this out exactly and what leeway he would give. And that, I imagine, would depend on how frequent of a flyer the per, like, the contractor is or, you know, whoever's not pulling permits and doing things, because it's kind of seems like it's geared. You know, like you said, steep, and I'd think for the perpetual, you know, people that continually do the same thing.
And maybe, maybe this is, so, I would assume, and it wouldn't even have to come to the selectman, that the building inspector would go and issue a cease and desist if he saw somebody building a house without a permit.
Yeah.
I would assume that that now if this person abided by it, then there wouldn't be a hundred dollars per day fine. Is that how?
I don't know, because it doesn't use the, the term cease and desist in there necessarily.
It's not in there, yeah.
Or any type of threat of a work stoppage at all.
Yeah, and then, that, I think also, it should be weighed according to what's being done. You know what I mean? Like, if somebody's building a shed that exceeds the minimum, I mean, the maximum square footage.
Yeah.
That's not the same as building a strip mall. Right?
Yeah.
And so shouldn't it be weighed, like, or if somebody will see later on about, um, which I don't think should be there, re-roofing their house. That's different than building a house.
Yeah.
Should we make a list of questions to ask Pete that he can answer?
Yeah, yeah, so we need more clarity on those violations section.
Yeah, and then the other one was, um, the last end of the paragraph, "Application submitted incomplete, the same project more than twice will be charged fifty dollars each subsequent time it is submitted for review." That seems a bit hostile.
Again, I don't know what he's, you know, based with, yeah, and what he's come up against over the, you know, in his time that he's been there. Uh, but definitely sounds like there's probably some issues that are going on that he's trying to look to rectify and utilize the violation section to help encourage people coming in to get permits when they need to, and when they know they need to.
Get clarity on that whole section.
Yeah.
Did we approve this last summer?
No.
I think it was kind of brought to us and we said we should review it, if I remember right.
Because it says approved on eight twenty twenty-four. Right down at the bottom of the page. And revised on eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, Pete, he did revise it, I don't know that it was twenty twenty-four, I think maybe it was twenty twenty-five. I think, but he revised it recently.
Yeah, that's probably what I'd imagine is probably August twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth, that when he made revisions.
So that's probably gonna be the answer to a lot of my questions, is not sure what he was thinking. Because
Yeah.
how can we be? In the terms of permit, in the last sentence, in no case will a permit be extended for more than a two-year period. I don't understand the need for that.
I do know sometimes people submit building permits and then for one reason or another, then they can't start building the house or whatever, and then they have to ask for an extension for, so building permits are only good for a year.
Yeah, this is what
And then.
it outlines, you can extend it for a hundred and eighty days. It says, "One or more extensions for of time for periods not more than a hundred and eighty days each."
Oh, I always thought it was a year.
Well, I guess I don't understand what the hardship is on the town if somebody keeps.
Extending.
Extending, I mean, we have I believe there, is there a fee involved in that?
Hmm, there's an extension fee.
Yeah, I think it's right up. No? Terms of permit.
It says, "In no case will a permit be extended for more than a two-year period."
Commencing the first day issue.
Yeah, and that's where I, I'm just questioning why, I mean, what do we? Why does the town care?
There's, there's a big difference between building a eighteen-hundred-foot house and building a five-thousand-square-foot house.
What's that?
The amount of time it's going to take to build the house.
Yeah, it could be, but I'm wondering why we care if somebody wants to keep extending. Like, what kind of hardship does that place on the town? If somebody keeps extending it and they go beyond two years, is that like, stop?
Because we have that, um, house that we approved up on Kennebec Court. And he said that it could take him two to three years to build it, so, like, he's already thinking outside that two-year scope, so that is a valid. You know, he came into the board and said it could take him up to three years to build it, he was thinking, so.
Yeah.
If you're continuing to build, that's not a problem, you don't have to get the extension.
That's what I was thinking.
It's when you, if, it's when you abandon or you suspend, you're built. If, if, if it takes you two years to build a house, because you're building it by yourself after working on weekends, then you're fine, as long as you're making progress constantly. But if you're not making any progress, you've either walked away from it or, you know, you know you're not gonna do it for a year. You're not gonna do anything on it, that's when this comes into play. It's not if you are, if it takes you five years to build your house, it's fine. It's as long as you're continuing to maintain progress on it.
So it's more written that work has to commence within this, and that if it takes longer, that is what it is.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's if you suspend or abandon. That's when the problem is, so then I guess the town would care because now you got an ice war sitting there, if it's a half build and maybe compromise the structure, if it's not closed up or something, I don't know.
Well, I think them words should be included in this, then. What you just said, suspend or abandon.
It is.
Where?
Third line down.
Or if that were. Oh, haha. Man, are they fast.
Just got AI edited right in.
Yeah, AI is something else.
Right? I even saw it without my glasses on. But I do know that from just being in, you know, like, when I was filling in in there for a while, a few years ago. Because at, at that time, there was a somewhat of a problem because everything, all the costs of everything went up and people just stopped because I'm not paying forty dollars for a two-by-four or a hundred dollars for a sheet of plywood, you know?
So then I think that last sentence could say, "In no case will a permit be extended for more than a two-year period on a suspended or abandoned project." Just to address like what Sean just brought up, of somebody who's planning on taking. Just to address like what Sean just brought up of somebody who's planning on taking. Mm-hmm. Two years because they're gonna do all the work themselves.
Right.
And I think that should be okay. Mm-hmm. Did Alan, you do have something to say?
Always.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
You don't mind.
I'm curious why you're concerned about the time. Starting, finishing, whatever, because also within this mess here is the inspection schedule. Which means if I take ten years. We're we're building something to a standard, you're setting a code, certain dimensions, certain window sizes, electrical, yeah, yeah. And does it matter if I finish it in a year, two years, ten years? Because when I finish a certain portion of it, I have to get inspected. So if it took ten years, it didn't matter. There's no structural issue because it passes the inspection then. Why are we putting restrictions, say you got to start in a hundred and eighty days? We just had a gentleman in here talking about a road that was approved ten years ago. He had no problem looking back and saying that was approved ten years ago, and now we're ready to use that as a basis to finish the road.
Hmm.
If we applied this same thinking to that, no, you can't do the road. You have to reapply every time for the last ten years. We're we're going to a standard and and the time that happens is up to the individual, as long as it passes the inspection. So if I have to have a foundation inspection for whatever my personal reasons that I couldn't get it in, we had. Personal injuries, we had money problems, whatever. I've got the permit, here's, this has already been approved, the foundation size, the specifications. And that has been approved. Now, if I do it this year, next year, whatever, he's going to come out and inspect it, however, and say it's adequate. It passes inspection, so the the timeframe is immaterial.
Mm-hmm.
So going back to this again, it's only if you suspend or aban- abandon your project. If it takes you ten years to build your house and you haven't stopped. Building, you know, it took you a year to get the foundation in and then it took you another year to get the framing up. You're not abandoning it, cause you're still working on it.
Well, what it's working on is it changes, there's a guy down the street from me that's been working. On a building down there since I've been here, and I've been here thirty years. And there's nothing there yet to be, to call a building. So what he does on his property in his time, it doesn't matter if it's abandoned. It hasn't passed inspection, so it's not, you can't occupy it yet. So it's simply his hobby. And why are we putting the restrictions of restricting building? Per master plan, we're trying to get affordable housing to make it that difficult that you have to start it now, have to be done. It's great if you have a contractor and you wanna put that on a contractor, so you gotta be up there building, but. You're putting on everything, two hundred and five foot square shed. You're telling somebody they can't do this at their leisure, we got swimming pools that are under twenty-four inches. That's a kiddie pool.
Mm-hmm.
My neighbor across the street just had a pool put in, it's not twenty-four inches.
You gotta wait, cause that was on my notes.
We're we're, I, my personal thing is we're getting too, too much building code enforcement for a lot of little things. When I first saw that thing that came out a few years ago, they wanted to charge us twenty-five dollars to change an electrical outlet in my house. I mean, we're we're getting a little carried away here.
So that section is not a section that changed in any way from what we approved last year.
Um, this one that we're talking about?
Yeah.
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 I don't doubt it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting, we see the value to it, but at the same time, you know, in that case, so you know, someone that wanting to build their own home.
Well, a home is one thing, but what if they wanna build a garage?
A garage, home, a garage, or build something for themselves.
There's something they can handle themselves, why are they pressured to? I gotta start it by May first and I gotta be done by such and such, or I gotta reapply. And what are you gonna do if they go to, I start a house and I'm taking it at my leisure? And then my permit ran out, cause I didn't do it in two years, I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna reapply, are you gonna deny me? Because I extended the time and I'm three quarters done? Or half done, or even a quarter done, you're not gonna, you're not gonna say no.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, I've got this much invested in it, you can't basically tell me no, now I can't do it because of the time issue.
Yeah. Take a look and see where, the way is there.
A building permit because of the criteria of the building or structure to change. And the only time you should avoid that is if something in the state changes the criteria, window size changes. So your plan, if you haven't completed it by now, is no longer valid.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, if they wanna take ten years or twenty years.
So that was my thought on that, then I went to seven and just had an English change.
Oh, page seven?
Page seven.
What's the section?
On the top, the bottom of that paragraph, if the lot is large. It says a portion of the land with no buildings on it need not be drawn, I just would say the portion. And that's, I know it's kinda nitpicky, but. But I made a note, so I'm gonna say it, cause I must have thought it was important.
And part of it too would depend on, um, if it's in wetlands or setbacks for any other reason.
And that's what it's talking about.
Yeah.
So that's why it says, that's why I said it shouldn't say. A portion with no buildings on it doesn't need to be.
Yeah. Doesn't need to be depicted or?
Unless there's. Zip in it.
And then into the unnumbered.
Yeah, there is the object that, um, you know, let's say the septic system. And the well have to be seventy-five feet apart. So you would, you would need that, even though it's an open lot, you would need that delineated.
Yeah, and that goes without saying, everybody knows, right? That all setbacks from property lines and wetlands, that's part of the deal.
Or maybe it should say a portion of the land with no buildings or structures, cause the well and the septic is considered a structure. Doesn't need to be shown.
Yeah, I mean, it was just like, it just seemed odd language to me. That's all, and I don't care.
Yeah, so does it change the substance, it just?
It's just.
Word to.
Yeah, just a word.
More directly.
So instead of, uh, you wanted to say that portion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then skip the next page, no, on the next page, it doesn't have a number on it. Ten, but it would be number eight. On the requirements section. Proposals that intend to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move or demolish a building. And I just wonder about repair. I suppose that's kind of. Yeah, depending. And maybe outline more.
The repairs are, yeah, look, they're listed down below that.
Down below where?
What?
Yeah, uh, list them out on the next page.
Right here?
Yeah.
Repairs that involve cutting away the wall.
Like a good. Requires a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says all structures greater than.
So then, like if you're gonna repair a shed that's two hundred square feet or larger, you need to get a permit. Is that what this reads?
Well, the repairs are listed below, so if it's removal of a structural beam or low bearing support. You're changing where, you're changing where the door is or something, any aggress. If you're just fixing a hole in a wall or something, you don't need a permit. It's only when you're doing anything structural.
Yeah, so on that list there, I did, I did go into that, and the first one that I circled was re-roofing. I don't understand why. We need.
Peter doesn't either, that may be, that may be a state thing, I'm not sure, but Peter doesn't think that, he doesn't agree with roofing.
Cause it's, we don't, there's no need to get a permit for reciting. I'd like to see it's.
Just a lot of times they don't like to see more than one layer, I guess, but maybe you could. The codes in most towns, you can do two layers, but they don't wanna see three, so I don't know if that's why.
Well, it doesn't really say anything about layers here, it just says re-roofing that involves stripping of existing roof.
Yeah, I don't see why that would have to be in there, if you're stripping a roof, you're gonna put a.
Yeah.
But you actually see a number of, um, of metal roofs. That are just laid on top of, to to end up putting some furnace strips under it.
Yeah.
And and lay the metal on top of whatever, um, tiles are there now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, which is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing is, it says here, all structures greater than two hundred square feet and larger, um. What is the size of a structure that has a footprint of, I think it's, um, a hundred and twenty square feet before it becomes taxable?
That's where the shed.
Everything's taxable.
Hmm?
Everything's taxable, even a little eight by eight shed that you buy at Home Depot, it's taxable, you just don't need a permit to put it up.
It, I, I thought that, um, anything a hundred and twenty square feet and and less was, uh, non-taxable.
Not a part of the assessed value?
It is.
Part of the assessed value.
It is part of the assessed value. You just don't need a permit to do it.
Which is why a lot, a lot of people, um, put up, you know, something to, to store their, uh, their firewood for the winter. And they're in a smaller, a much smaller room.
Well, I mean, if you just put enough like a little lean to to throw your firewood under, that's not taxable. But if you're building an, an eight by eight shed, you don't need to get a permit to put the shed up, but you would be taxed on it. There would be an assessed value for that shed.
I'll have to look into it, cause I, I I don't agree with you, but I'll look into it.
Then right above that is.
This is getting too heated.
I know, right?
I can't, I can't, it's taken.
Okay.
No, I need to leave, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You had nothing to add to this, huh?
No, no, nothing.
So the fence six feet. If you're going higher than six feet, you need a permit, but if it's lower, you don't correct. Why?
All right, we're gonna pause this, I think we're gonna have a special night with Pete, like the.
Can we get notes?
I think that's a state.
Yeah.
At least, do you mind if we?
Yeah, no, yeah, what a goodness, yeah.
At least get notes of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think that might be a state thing and that's been in there forever.
And it's strange. Then. On the, um. Exempt from a building permit, which. Means that anything prefabricated swimming pool that is less than twenty-four inches deep. I can go to Walmart and buy a thirty-six inch deep. Swimming pool, does that mean I need a building permit to?
Right.
Ten foot diameter swimming pool that's thirty-six inches deep, I don't like. I don't see, I think I remember seeing that in the IBC when we adopted it. Something of that nature, but, ah. So that was my question on that, is are we requiring people to get a building permit for a prefabricated?
A prefab?
Yeah, like you go buy them inflatable swimming pools.
Oh, you're talking about those, okay, I thought you meant.
Is that what this is implying?
A pre, how about a prefab home? You know, an ATU that falls under that nine, nine hundred forty.
Yeah, that's something different.
Yeah.
Definitely something different, yeah, this is just about prefabricated swimming pools.
So, so these are things you don't need permits for.
Right, but it's implying that you do need one.
But you wanna know why. If it's over.
If it's over twenty-four inches. And then I just had a note to self as a selectman on page ten. Any party who has, this is under appeal of general requirements, any party who has been aggrieved by the denial of a building permit application. Or administrative decision made by the building inspector. May appeal such action by filing with the zoning board of adjustment. In writing an appeal within thirty days from notice. And so if somebody is, um. Has a disagreement with the building inspector. It doesn't come to us, it goes to the zoning board.
Right.
So that was a note to self, I never knew that.
Hmm.
That's that whole.
Yeah.
Balance of power between ZBA and selectmen then.
And it's also, and within thirty, if you go by thirty days, I forgot, what does the ZBA, how often does the ZBA get to you?
Yeah, once a month.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
I know, that's.
So you, you get a notice and you came back from a trip, um, that was, you know. Two weeks or, uh, two weeks gone and you see the notice at that point, and you're already in violation.
Oh, if you send, if you send the email or send the letter of appeal to the ZBA, it doesn't have, as long as the ZBA receives it within thirty days.
Mm-hmm.
It it doesn't have to be at a meeting.
Could be, if you're out of the country, that could.
Well, uh, if it's that bad, then you're gonna send an email anyway and say, hey. I just saw this letter and I wanna appeal it, I'm out of the country for thirty days, I'll get to you when I get back.
Yeah, and a lot of this stuff has to be dealt with reasonably.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. If it's possible, when you have volumes of, of rules, it can take away a lot of reason, but. But right above this appeal is that last line is the same line that we just hashed out. No permit shall be renewed after two years.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a part of that other discussion.
That could partially be because, um, the building, uh, codes change.
I think that's what this is.
I think that is maybe what that has to do with.
That, this is addressing that. It says provided there are no changes to the construction plans or town regulations governing the permit.
What section is that?
Uh, this is on page ten, section four, under renewal.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's definitely, uh, Peter needs to sit in on conversation, the whole thing.
Well, yeah, but at least something to.
Yeah.
Go over, I don't think it's a waste of time, if chairman disagrees, I will stop.
I'll go over this evening.
Yeah, just.
I'm gonna chip chat and like, yeah, go through this, that's perfectly fine.
But if you could just.
Cause a lot of it just seems to come back down to having that. You know, discussion with him to answer to it. Or give us, you know, the rationale behind some of the stuff.
Yeah, so then my next one was the dwelling unit area. Why do we have a s- minimum? Six hundred square foot minimum? Like, why do I care if someone wants to build a five hundred square foot house?
I feel like.
I mean, you can go down to a four hundred, if you call it a one bedroom or efficiency.
Well, sir.
Building. But I think if somebody wants to do four hundred square feet. I don't see why we care, and maybe, there's probably a law that says you can. Which, again, I don't get, but whatever, I just question why.
There's, well, there's some areas that they've had people doing complexes of, what's it called, an ERT?
Year.
Oh, yeah, year.
Year.
And what's that?
And, and so, um, and those are a lot less than six hundred square feet.
But it's not gonna be like a single family dwelling.
But it could be, I mean, this thing might allow for it.
A lot of, uh, the, a lot of them have been put down as single family dwellings.
But this might allow for it, if you call it an efficiency or one bedroom unit.
Right, and then it'll, there's also.
But then even that one has a, I, I don't get why do we care?
A minimum of three hundred and twenty square feet.
Why do we care what the minimum is? I don't know, I don't see any threat to public safety if somebody deals.
I feel like I heard a.
Three hundred and fifty feet instead of four hundred feet.
Yeah, I feel like I heard a host bill or something that's out there now that you can't regulate a minimum. I might be wrong, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, I feel like I heard that somewhere though.
Yeah, there was something.
Yeah.
Recently when they were talking about, yeah.
Yeah, very recently.
I remember reading that, and I don't remember what it was.
And on page eleven, under new construction, I just question whether or not we need that final bullet point. Of a permit fee will be assigned, cause I think that goes without saying. And then, in the next section, residential additions, alterations, remodeling, et cetera, first one. Completed application submitted electronically, period. I think we should accept paper.
Yeah.
And then if we need to scan it into our, to get our electronics, that should be fine.
It has to be manually entered as a permit, so you can, you can fill out a paper one, but then whoever the admin is, is gonna have to physically put it in.
Right, but not everybody is.
Right.
Comfortable with the electronics, and I don't think we should force people to. And the next bullet item is the electrical plans. I was told by an electrician that New Ipswich is one of the only towns. To require an electrical plan for a house, because the IBC spells out.
Turns out everything.
Everything, why are you requiring, because it just adds cost to a person building a house, now they have to have somebody draw up. An electrical plan, which is not required, so I'd like to see that one stricken. And then on page twelve, we get back to the swimming pools. Twenty-four inches or greater. Completing application, show a site plan, plan of pool, electrical appliances, all of this, um. I don't know. I wish, I wish this could be in-ground swimming pools and forget about above-ground. But, again, maybe laws. I don't know, but if there's no laws, that's what I'd like to see. I think there are definite considerations that should be done with an in-ground swimming pool. And the next one, I think we discussed this last year, building permits for tents.
What?
I don't like it. Or greater than two hundred square feet, including special event tents.
So I can see, like, Hillfest.
I like it, it allows us to make sure that the public is safe.
But what about private? Two hundred square feet, that's not that big.
I think that's actually a state thing, isn't it?
Again, a lot of these might be, I'm not sure, but I'm just bringing up.
Yeah.
My perspective on it, like, two hundred square feet.
I think even if it's a, my opinion, uh, even if it's a private event, our diligence is still to protect the community, so you're not putting up a two hundred square foot tent just yourself. Probably gonna have people under there, so you'd like to make sure that it is safe.
But that just, I think, falls on the person who's there, not on the town. And if somebody's having, if the town is having a special event, we definitely want the building inspector and the fire chief. To look at it for life safety issues, but when it's a private thing.
Would Hillfest, Hillfest is considered a private event, right, cause it's ticketed?
It's a big tent.
Yeah, it was a.
The thing is where it came down to, like, even, um, discussion with pop-up tents or. Whatever that was, you guys plan on bringing down a three hundred square foot tent Saturday?
Right.
Tents apart, so.
Yeah, a twelve by sixteen tent is gonna be a hundred and ninety-two square feet, so if you were.
Ten by thirty, yeah.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying, like, the size, twelve by sixteen, so, call it twelve by eighteen, now you need a permit, and that's. And inspections, and then we're asking our.
Oh, we did have an occasion. Several years ago where the winds kicked up.
Yeah. I don't know if that was inspected or not.
It was, right, yeah, it was.
Yeah, and they were advising not to have their event, and then it wound up being an MCI for the town. Which we called, every neighbor in town could get over twenty patients.
Are you taking notes, or are you gonna just take my scripts?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I took notes.
Okay, then I'm.
Uh, well, I mean, even, even like, I mean, I got married in my backyard and I had two twenty by four inch tents.
Yeah.
I didn't get a permit.
And if I recall.
Up one day, down the next.
This might be a part of IBC, although I don't remember what the state adopted. So, like I said, some of these might be move points, I just am putting my thoughts, uh, page thirteen, under section eight, framing. I would like to see locally sunned lumber somehow addressed in here. It's not mentioned, but it should be an option for people that's kind of spelled out.
I think it's, uh, the lack of grading of the, the wood.
Maybe under other details.
Uh, cause there's only. So many, uh, if maybe one in the state, like, I'd heard years ago that would grade, um, rough sun.
Hmm.
Hmm-hmm.
But, but there is. I remember framing for the state, a salt shed, and we used hemlock, rough sun hemlock.
Hmm-hmm.
I know the state doesn't have to follow building code laws, but whatever with that. Um, I think it should be an option somehow, I don't know.
A lot of garages are built with, uh, rough sun lumber.
Yeah, I don't know if that's acceptable here. Under our. But. It would be nice if so, if there is anything that addresses locally sun, whether it's forbidden or. Or if there's a way to use it, it'd be nice to have it spelled out for people.
So if you wanted to build your own house out of trees, you cut from your backyard?
Exactly. And then, I think that was pretty much it, other than I do find a bit of repetition, which sometimes you need. Sometimes you don't. But I do, I, I enjoy. As limited words as possible. That was, that was my thoughts on our process.
Perfect timing, brought us right to six o'clock.
Ha.
Look at that.
We haven't even started, cause Lou has his thoughts.
So, this is.
No.
Nope, I don't think they're meeting tonight, the board of assessors?
Uh, I don't know, I wanna build a garage, and I was supposed to come to one of these meetings, I'm not really sure, I thought it was Tuesday night at six.
To build the garage.
To the assessors?
Then I might put an apartment above it.
Oh, that would be the zoning board you need to go to, that, they meet the first Thursday of every month at seven.
Zoning? Which is at five?
So this Thursday at seven, they'd be having a meeting.
Alright.
Would you put in any kind of application or send an email to anyone about it?
Yeah. The permit?
Zoning board?
No, but I talked to. You, Debbie?
Yeah.
I've talked to you a couple of times about the driveway and stuff, and I thought you said just to come to a, a.
Oh, if you, if you're.
It's been a couple of months, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, so if you wanted to, I don't know why you would need to go to the zoning board to build a garage.
Maybe because my driveway.
You'd have to get permission.
Which was driveway was a little close to the property line, but if it's just an accessory building, I don't mean to interrupt everything.
That's fine.
If it's just an accessory building with no apartment above.
Right, you just get a building permit.
Can it be within ten feet of the property line, the road that leads there?
Then you'd, then you'd need, then.
Hundred, two hundred feet.
Then you'd need the CBA.
Yeah, you'd need an adjustment.
The zoning board, just because the, the.
So come Thursday to the zoning board meeting.
Um, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I.
You don't know, cause they.
You'd have to make it like an appointment, you have to tell them, yeah, you'd have to fill out the application.
They want the application, yeah.
To get on the, to get on the agenda.
Permanent?
A CBA?
Alright, well.
That would be typically how it's done, but you, I don't think there would be a problem with coming in and saying, I think I'm supposed to be here and get a direction from them, would that be?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't see why you couldn't, so they meet at seven on Thursday night, on the first Thursday of every month, they only meet once a month.
Yeah, please to pin out my options.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if they do conceptual stuff, that's the trouble, just going, so they'll say, we need an application, and then they'll review the application, the, decide whether or not they're going to take it up or not.
Right. Right. Hmm.
So then that's kinda why, I don't know if they'll get into any type of conceptual.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know.
Conversation.
Hmm.
So Lou, you?
Yeah, and, and planning board does.
Yeah, but ZBA, I don't think that they, they do that, but I could be misspeaking.
No, you're great.
Yeah, yeah, I'd hate for you to come down and just be asked to fill out an application, so.
So is there an application online, he can start working?
Maybe I'll just do my building permit.
Yeah, and see what's up there.
And try and send that first, as far as I can get it.
Yeah, yeah, if you submit the building permit, and then they can tell you, oh, you need to, you, okay, you're good, or you don't need to go to the ZBA to get it.
Yeah, and you know, I got garage, so I guess I.
Right, huh?
There's a CBA sheet in the front off, uh, the front lobby, right?
Uh, maybe, yeah, they're online as well, though.
For the rules.
Definitely.
They're on the website and they're, um.
The zoning, yeah, I could, uh.
I'm sure.
So it, it says right here, we're, we're actually just reviewing the building permit process, so you have quite the timing.
We got the driveway.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but it says right here, minimum setback in feet from edge of property line to structure, twenty.
Right.
To structure?
Yeah.
Well, edge of driveway to property line. Edge of driveway, sorry, I, I shouldn't have put structure in there. Edge of driveway, any driveway has to be twenty feet from the property line.
The driveway is considered. Yeah.
If you're looking at doing.
Now, what's a driveway, from the road?
What's a driveway?
Yeah, so coming off the road, cause I have a driveway, current driveway, and if you just, and that is set back twenty feet from the edge of my property line, for sure. So, I can continue going up my driveway, and it goes to my property line, goes to ten feet to my property line and goes, and parallels it for a little bit, then it starts coming, coming back. Someday. I can come, I talked to the highway chief, and he came down, and we were talking about putting a second driveway on my property. And that one, if you pull off the road, goes straight up, that one's, starts ten feet off my prop, ten or fifteen feet off my property line, so that's the one that was gonna go through, but.
Gotcha.
And that one would need, it would need, you would need to fill out an application.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so if you filled out a driveway permit, Peter would give his recommendation on it, and then you come here.
Yeah, he gave his recommendation.
For the second driveway. Permission.
Well, this one's within ten feet of the property line.
But it's also, yeah, so we would have to go to the ZBA first, then here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, I don't waste anymore of your time, but, I feel like if I kept my normal driveway.
So many rules.
Which is still, you don't, they don't want cars going next to neighbors' property line, I get it, so.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, I'll just do the.
That would be the procedure, though, if you're gonna go any closer than twenty.
Yes, or I move it over.
And then.
And then see if they just follow.
Then you, you would need a variance in order to.
Yeah.
Accomplish that.
Yeah, as long as, as long as I'm twenty feet away, I don't need a variance, and it shouldn't.
Correct, yes, much simpler, yeah, you could, if, you could just get the permission, come to the select, get Peter's approval first.
That's so.
Come to the select board so they can approve a second driveway, as long as Peter says, yeah, there's line of sight, and it meets all the driveway regs, and then you can, um. Apply for your building permit for the garage.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you talked to Jenny about that, too, I think we both.
Yeah.
Talked to you about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and another thing to bear in mind is, it would be a minimum of sixty days.
For it to go through.
If you do a, of a zoning appeal.
Yeah, zoning.
Because it's thirty days to present. No, it would be a minimum of thirty days, right?
Yeah, if you go down the first agenda.
If you, if you got it on this week, it would be a minimum of thirty days if you were able to present it this week, which, I don't know if they would put you on the agenda or not, but then it's another hearing.
Right. Cause they have a two-part process, one, you submit your application, they decide whether or not to accept it, if they accept it, they'd schedule you for, excuse me, hearing for the next month.
Okay.
But if you're gonna move it, so it, it meets all the setbacks, and Peter approves it, come here.
Yeah.
We'll see if we approve it.
Yeah.
Cross my fingers, but, yeah, I'll just, I'll just try and move the driveway, is, is what it is.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, have a good one.
Well, thank you for giving me the. The floor on this, I hope to get answers.
Yeah, we're gonna, I heard it.
It's nice that you're ready.
Yeah, I understand.
Lou, do you have any further discussion on, uh, the building guide?
Um, no, but I've got a lot of things I need to check out.
Okay.
Before I say anything more.
Alan?
Is there an urgency to approve this?
No.
No.
Okay, cause I'm looking at the zoning regulation update for accessory dwelling units, and they're having a Zoom meeting at midnight. To approve a number of things, and talked about the nine hundred and fifty square foot dwelling and so on and so forth, so with this. Do you want this to match up with what they're going to try to approve?
It makes sense, yeah.
Before we sign into something that's only good for eighteen days?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, as it is, we're just over a year that we signed it last year.
I know, but, uh, another question I had is, and just an opinion, now, it's not in this, uh, liability, should the building inspector be wrong? Or the appeal is overruled? I remember sitting in this thing, this is like ten, fifteen years. I remember sitting in this thing, this is like ten, fifteen years ago, somebody had gotten a house approved and at the time we didn't have a building inspector approve, it was approved by the fire department. And the floor plans came in, the whole thing was in, it's got the initials over in a corner where David Lila at the time, I believe, signed off on it, said fine, and then someone looked at it later after the fact for the final inspection, said, well, the windows are too small. And it says, this is what's on the plan. Well, that doesn't matter, it's windows are too small. So you can't, now that's an error on the part of the townspeople. And if your building inspector makes a error and we appeal it and you find it in favor of the property owner, are you going to assume the liability for tearing that building down or that two hundred square foot shed or a little twenty-eight inch pool?
It's a, I think that's a really good point, under the appeals part there, we forget that this appeal is gonna cost money. To whoever's doing it.
It's definitely gonna cost money.
And if the town, if the ZBA finds that the person is right, the building inspector is wrong, we should be prepared to, um, compensate, I think.
I mean, it's not in here and you have, you, you don't, you don't owe you that right now, but that has come up in the past.
Right.
Because, I mean, nobody in this town ever makes a mistake, but, you know, should it ever happen? Then who's liable? Because when you're talking about my little two hundred square foot shed, I'm gonna bitch and moan about, I'm a hundred bucks. But if you're gonna force me to do this a hundany day, renew, do this, and then I have concrete trucks which charge me, what are they, a hundred and some dollars an hour to come out to your house? Or whatever, that costs me money or costs the contractor money.
I'm sure there's a court case or two.
If you're going to cease and desist it, and then find out that if you rule in my favor, well, somebody owed me for that hundred and some dollars an hour and had that contract, you know, all those guys out there.
One of those questions the town wore.
There were questions to town, I hear.
What was that?
No, I'm sure that there's a, some type of precedent, you know, out there. You know, and probably some type of legislation from the state.
Anyway, I think you put the whole thing on hold until those planning board finishes their little
It might go beyond that because we'd like to discuss it.
While in fact, find out what they're doing.
Yeah.
I said, it might go beyond that because we'd like to have a sit-down with our county enforcement officer, he's not gonna be available on a meeting night until after January.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's true.
Okay.
Alright.
Are those meetings that he's attending in place or are they Zoom meetings? Do you know?
He has to attend them.
Yeah, and, and he said he wouldn't be available, so he, whether it's on Zoom or not, he wouldn't be able to Zoom
Okay.
In this room and then, yeah, yeah.
No, I was just wondering, cause if it's Zoom, you know, I, I would tap, try to tap into it.
What?
Uh, it's college or some type of schooling for himself.
It's class.
Okay.
Yeah. But, yeah, reach out and see, I don't know. Um,
Yep.
We'll move on from building and pick up our conversation on the command vehicle. Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely.
This evening.
Yep.
Alright, did you have anything new for us?
So, we did, um, we did an at worst cost, or at worst, uh, kinda calculation of if we did all the purchases that we're suggesting. By the time we have to replace our next engine, which would be engine four, um, in the cap reserve, um, we would have, um, by twenty twenty-nine, we'd have at worst, not any improvement to the cap reserve whatsoever. We'd have six hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars in there for replacing engine four. Um, our current engine, um, engine one, we came to replace that, was just shy of, call it four hundred grand, it was like three seventy something plus radios, so with inflation, you're probably gonna be up in that, in that range, but, um, we're not depleting the cap reserve to the point where we wouldn't be able to purchase our next truck.
How many years did you say that was?
That was, uh, that'd be twenty twenty-nine. That's at ninety-five thousand dollars of per year added to it, after all of our deductions. The percentage drop would be, in our account would be thirty, with all the vehicles this year, would be thirty-four point seven percent. And that's the at worst cost for everything, which we already know we're, uh, well below with the utility truck and then the command vehicle, um, at worst cost, uh, has come down quite a bit since we've, um, even quoted everything out, it's not gone out, it's come down, um, and not to get too far off track with the at worst, but, of course, as soon as we had last met, um, we had, um, looked on one of the fire websites for command vehicles and, um, we have, I think, I think I sent it to maybe not you, maybe Jason, or, we talked about it with Jason, um, it had actually got posted that night, at nine o'clock at night. Uh, we found it the next morning, it was a twenty twenty-two GMC Suburban, fully outfitted with lights, the only we'd have to do to it would be put, uh, radios in it, so the radio column would stay the same, there are radios in it now, but they're all the wrong frequencies, they're not even programmable to our frequency, so, if we were to purchase that vehicle, uh, it would be sixty thousand for the vehicle, um, and then we'd still have to do the, the radios at eighty-five three seventy, or the, uh, eighty-five, uh, thirty-seven for the radios. So radio cost doesn't change, it's just the, the command vehicle cost going from, um, the seventy-eight thousand would go down to sixty. And that's outfitted with the command box out back, a gear holder, which is required, um, you can't just put beer in a vehicle anymore. Uh, has to be in either filtered box or in a separate compartment like a cab in a truck or something. Uh, they're finding a huge, um, kinda relating it to a lot of cancer cases in, in our area and even the fire service, so
How, how many passengers is this?
Um, it carries the same, it'd be four, four people, cause the backseat would be taken out for the command box and you'd have to take the backseat out for the, um, which is in it, um, for the fire extinguishers and all the other equipment that you need to carry. So the capacity that the people you could carry is about the same.
How many miles did you say it was on it?
Uh, that one had twenty, I can pull it up.
Oh, you didn't say, I thought you said.
I can pull it up right now. I believe it was in the twenties, uh, the only reason this vehicle came up for sale is the chief in the town that, um, the vehicle came from, in his contract, it said that he was specified a GMC Yukon, not a G- GMC Suburban. So the town has to sell this car to abide by his contract.
Wow.
So
It's a little nitpicky.
Yeah, it's approximately two hundred and twenty miles from here, um, so it's one of the things that, it's the closest one we found that was really anything to look at, um, I don't wanna buy something that we end up getting and then just keep putting money into repairs and repair things, have a service more than it's in service. Um, it doesn't, that kinda works against us, not for us.
And the other truck was how much?
Uh, the brand new truck was outfitted with the box and the lights, uh, was seventy-eight, six eighty-two, so minus the radios, actually.
Plus eighty-five thirty-seven for the radios, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so the total cost at eighty-seven twenty. I'm trying to find the mileage in one of these dash pictures, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was just curious, I thought you had said it, I just wanted to take it down if you had, if you hadn't, that's okay.
So this one actually has forty-seven thousand miles on it.
Forty-seven?
Yeah, not twenty-seven. He wrote forty-seven, but it's not, it's, yeah, he wrote twenty-seven, but it's actually forty-seven eighteen.
Hi, me.
And you said it's a Suburban?
Yeah.
And what was the new one?
Um, the GMC pickup.
Just a pickup?
Yeah, uh, twenty-five hundred.
That one was seventy-eight thousand plus the eighty-five hundred for the radios.
Radios, and this one would be sixty thousand plus the
So about a eighteen thousand roughly.
Dollar, yeah.
I have to assume, like, that it'd probably be, um, it's probably one of the heavy-duty versions.
Well, I think, if you, so if you just look up, like, a twenty-two GMC Suburban, it would come up ten times cheaper
Yeah.
because they don't have all the lights, the sirens, the box out back that your gear goes into, just for that box, not the whole command center, just the box, is ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You have to have it, yeah, so, um
Oh.
Isn't that insane?
If you slap anything fire-related on it, it goes to the roof.
Right, yeah.
So, at sixty grand, it is a, it is a steal of a vehicle, like I said, just the box itself, just for your gear, it's stored in, because it has to be ventilated, it has to have you know, exchange of oxygen in and out, that can't be vented into your car, because then everyone's just breathing in the outgassing of what you just came from.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and then the time that you're in your vehicle driving around, doing whatever, you're just breathing that in.
And you feel good, like, as that, as an option, or?
I do, um, it just depends on what way the select board wants to go. I think that if y- your goal is to try to minimize, or try to understand how much money we spend, um, this might be a good second option. Rather than, uh, the eighty-seven thousand, you'd still be, call it seventy thousand, does a fair number, you know, with the radios, but the radio comes out of a different cap reserve. So you're sixty thousand out of the cap reserve of the vehicle, and then you're still the eighty-five hundred dollars out of the cap reserve of the radios.
So it's basically a difference of eighteen thousand dollars out of the cap reserve.
So I That comes out of the, out of the cap reserve of the truck, correct?
Yeah.
The only thing I, right, precaution again, this is difference between your very new vehicles, you're gonna get those many years of warranty that we're not gonna get with this, this other vehicle, with any used vehicle.
So the, how does that warranty work? Cause we ran into that with the Cruisers and
Mm.
once you start turning it into a, I don't know, you start drilling holes and stuff, then your warranty's gone on that.
Command vehicle. With the vehicle that we originally specked out, because it's the company that we're purchasing the vehicle from, they, they would all, all the holes that they drill, they would all
Which, I would assume that, that, I don't know what happened with our Cruiser.
Yeah, well, they, they, that's who we buy the Cruisers from too, right?
It turned out
They, well, they might just buy it for, yeah, they might buy it sep, they might get the vehicle separate and then they build it, you know? But they're both gonna look at each other versus, um, MHQ, I don't know if they build our Cruisers or not, or my Cruisers, if that's that.
I don't know if they do.
Uh, but they're, they're saying, they stand behind everything they do, so if there's an issue, they're gonna stand behind it. Um, again, same thing with the, any used car, when we start chopping into that, put radios and try to make it work, you might have an issue there, but
That is what it is, I mean, it's not
It's unavoidable too, he's just thinking.
I mean, the devil's advocate, and, and being completely transparent, is you could buy a brand new vehicle and it could break down tomorrow.
Yeah, and you can have the greatest warranty but never be able to use your rig, cause it's always in the shop, so whatever.
That's the downside.
Right.
My truck's on third transmission and it's brand new, so I, I mean, I'm just being, uh, being completely transparent with the board, just telling you, it is, you know, there's no guarantee, the only thing is, the difference is, is what end you might have to pay at, you know, if you go brand new, someone else is paying for it in theory, but, if you go use, you're paying for it and you're out of the vehicle.
Well, I think this changes things in my mind. Just knowing that the, um, fire truck capital reserve will probably be marginal and maybe have to drain, but I think they're savings accounts and they're set for a purpose, and if you drain it, you drain it and it gets built up again, cause you don't need it for I don't think our goal should be to have two million dollars buffer, no, I mean, might be, make everyone feel warm and fuzzy to be, except for the taxpayers, um, but, I don't know, this and then knocking another eighteen helps. Yeah.
No, I'm aware of the need and more on the line, like, the eighteen or twenty thousand dollars in savings is, is great, but I hate that, uh, what-if end of it, um, you know, used versus new, but I just know that, that the need's present, like, for the vehicle, um, for the department, um,
So that doesn't, that doesn't worry me about
No, my vote would still be, you know, towards the newer model, but that's me, you know, but overall, it'd be good just to see it, um, potentially come to happen.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I am in favor of letting our department heads make these decisions when, but this one caught me off guard, cause I know, I've been involved in the discussions on the fire truck and I do not like putting the people in a headlock and saying, you don't have a choice, pay up. Because kind of we do that anyways, but, you know, pay up in extra, I don't like that.
When we don't have to, we shouldn't, and I agree with you.
Yeah, so this, this makes me feel more comfortable and if
Yeah.
And I wasn't aware, I learned last week, that there used to be a command vehicle, my suspicion is, it wasn't as nice as this one. Because that's no such, and I wouldn't have minded if it wasn't as nice, but I am not afraid of, um, used vehicles and I'm not afraid of repairing vehicles. Doesn't make me at all nervous, it's part of life.
When was the last time we had a, um,
Command vehicle?
A command vehicle? It's been over ten years? I didn't ask you.
Yeah, that's what I was told, was it, it was like ten years ago or something, I didn't research it.
Okay. My take on it is, uh, I'd rather see, um, um, the money in escrow are built up a bit, you know, for another year before we, uh, before we do this.
Hmm. And what would be the point to that? And what would be the point to that?
It's the people's money. This is go- this would be draining out, um, close to fifty percent of what's in there. And that might put us in a tight spot if we have any problems with any of the other, uh, equipment.
Well, it was a third, so it's a little bit different, um, doesn't sound like much, but it is, um, twenty percent different, close to, um. And what would be left if this was approved?
Six, six fifty-six.
Well, now that was in four more years, yeah.
That's in twenty twenty-nine.
Is it one?
So it'd be.
After deductions, left after actual deductions is two seventy-six, three twenty-fourty-four.
Cause last week it was one ninety-seven. You guys crunched numbers.
Yeah, yeah, we were actually off a little bit because of the, uh, what number was it off by? I think, I think what had happened is the radios came out too, um.
Oh, I don't, yeah.
Yeah.
So the actual balance would be two seventy-six.
And we did all these numbers with Mary, just sat down with her with the capital reserves and just tried to figure out market value and.
So would this, would that still include, um, getting the undercoating and all of that?
It's built into this, the.
Into this sixty thousand?
Yeah, uh, no, that would just have to be rolled into next year's budget to undercoat it.
But that's not done on that, or maybe they had it done, you have to redo it.
Yeah, it's probably done every year, it didn't say online and the guy didn't know because it's just a, it's not the department selling it, it's a sales.
Right.
But if, if there was money left over, it could be done out of the capital reserve, would that be considered a part of a new vehicle purchase?
Well, we had it as included in the, it's like the, the new vehicle, yeah, like that was a part of that. Yeah.
I mean, maybe then future years within the budget.
Mm-hmm.
But we do have the, capital reserves are there for a use, you know, to be used.
Yeah.
And facilitate the needs of the department.
What did you wanna talk to, um, you know, lose thoughts on waiting a year or?
Well, I don't think uh, it doesn't do, it doesn't make me feel better to wait a year knowing that we will, we'll be right there. And I'm not, like I said earlier, I'm not afraid of draining a capital reserve. I think their savings account put there for a purpose and when you have that purpose arise, you use it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's what we did at DPW.
Yeah.
We just drained it, but that's what, there was a need and it's okay, in my mind.
Mm-hmm. Then with the, um, this other trustees' request and their, their approval for up to eighty-five-five, um. We could still, um, bring that down but use the same approval form, like that the VOS only approved up to
Mm-hmm.
this amount to come from that reserve, so they don't have to go to another trustees' meeting.
Now it'd be okay with trustees.
Yeah.
It'd be less, so I'm sure.
It'd be less, yeah, because we have up to that eighty-five-five authorized.
Yeah.
And did the wording say new or?
So it's a new command vehicle to support the department? So that could be new, introduced, yeah, new us, yeah, new us.
Or new us.
New, new used, right?
New us.
I think they have, I think they have said that that specifically applies to the fire department.
Yeah.
Right, isn't that what?
What's that?
That verbiage got changed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Too, so that we were able to take that used.
Right.
Mm.
And refurbish it.
Correct, yeah, just like we did at that other truck.
Yeah, so that.
That got took for the, uh, for the big fire truck.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So that would be okay then.
Mm-hmm.
But I would like to have the outfitting costs included.
Or like undercoating or whatever.
Yeah, so we rounded it up to sixty-five thousand, that would be able to take care of that.
Plus the radios.
Well, the radios is se- yeah, separate, yeah.
Settle down.
But, yep.
That's a separate.
We're just, sure.
That vehicle's un- but that vehicle's unknown.
You know, we're down to thirteen thousand dollar difference.
Yeah. What's that?
And then that would bring it down to like a thirteen thousand dollar difference.
Well, it depends what it worked out to be. For the undercoating.
Undercoating's gonna be four hundred bucks.
So, so we don't need to round you out there.
I'd like to trust you.
You know, it's, it's not gonna be that much.
What's that?
But you don't know what other gremlins there might be.
That's right. Neither do you with any vehicle.
And they could, and they could be very expensive.
I'd lift it.
My, my thing is, i- if we built up the reserve for another year, we can get a new one and we know exactly what we've got. And we could, we, we can fix it, I mean, this one's gonna need new radios anyway, because the, he said that the radios that they had.
But that cost, wouldn't that be lower, i- if it already has the box, is that what you talked about?
So the, well, he said that the, that the radios were all the wrong frequency.
What was the box you were talking about?
The command box in the back where you're, from your running.
That's what calls the radios.
So however that works. But.
Look. So actually the radios are inside the vehicle, right, or are they outside the vehicle?
They're inside.
Inside, and, and then that command box was specifically to the, like, gear and?
So there's radios out front, so as you're driving down the road, you can communicate with dispatch and then once you get on scene, both vehicles, you go to the rear of the vehicle and that's where your commander would be established, and you have separate radios out there, separate heads of the radios back there, so that you can still communicate, establish command, kinda gives an area for people to meet and then get their assignments and go, and that's the need for it back there.
So wouldn't, uh, the radios be less because of the wiring presumably is all, it's plug and play now, isn't it?
It, it could be.
If the radios are a different manufacturer or some other change, everything could be different because, um, you know, the connections to the radios themselves might not be compatible with what's already in there. That's what I'm saying, we don't know what we're getting, we don't know what kind of gremlins are in there.
Yeah, and the same thing, I mean, that applies no matter what you do.
To buy new, it doesn't apply. At least you've got a, at least you've got a warranty that goes with it.
In a perfect world.
And if you waited a year, wouldn't, well, potentially, the cost of a new truck could go up significantly, or even used trucks too. Just a thought.
I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, we're coming into the time that we're gonna be doing the budget here in the next month or so. And, um, I would hate to throw that kind of extra money into the budget, um.
What kind of extra money?
Well, the money that, um, to, my thing is, is, uh, to, uh, to build up the reserve that we've got so that we can get a new truck. We don't know.
But I think the math was done, that it was, it was doable to stay on track with what's needed.
Right, but once you take that money out to pay for this, what are you going to have left?
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Okay. I'm looking, you know, when, when I'm going through, um, um, the accounts payable, I'm seeing that the maintenance on all the, the vehicles that we've got are absolutely horrendous. You know, most of them are with TPW items.
Yeah. Yeah, it's expensive.
It's expensive, it's a lot of money and, you know, like I said, if you can build up the reserve for, uh, for another year, at least we'll know that, um, that we get something new and it should last a bit longer.
Yeah, and I don't share that. Being enamored with new, I've bought used, I've, I think I've bought two new vehicles in my life and all the rest of the vehicles have been used and to me, that's just a normal part of life and some have been lemons and some have been awesome.
Yeah, but now you're talking about fire trucks which get a lot more wear and tear and usage and are more specialized items that have more expensive parts associated with them.
But this one's a s- a Suburban.
Yep.
And I'm, I'll be curious to see how many miles get put on it because we've never had, well, I say never, somebody said we've had one ten years ago, they're not uncommon in fire departments. But I'll be curious to see two things, if we go ahead with this, how many miles are put on it? And what it does to the mileage uh, li- budget line that we pay, I know that's gonna be minimal, but the mileage is what I'm curious about. To see how that plays out, I don't think it's gonna be high miles. That's my gap, because we've never had one, but maybe now that we have one, it'll be used to go everywhere for everything, I don't know, I hope not, but
Mm-hmm.
It'd be nice if it was mostly used for a command vehicle and it could last a long time, like, what did you say, the brush truck was eighty-eight? Something like that, I think that's cool, that's.
Well, brush truck doesn't get fired up every time there's a call either, so.
I understand, but you know what I'm saying, like, to just use it as long as it goes.
Mm-hmm.
And yeah, there might be some great robotic thing five years from now, but oh well, we have our twenty-twenty-two Suburban and we're fine. And just keep on trucking.
Yeah.
And get all the life we can out of these things. Yeah. So I don't, that's where I am.
Could use a five-foot select board right now, with three different opinions.
Well.
New, used, and wait a year.
I'd all kind of agree, yeah. Yeah, this was, you know, it's put to, um, in front of us as a, uh, today, like now, um, need for the department, um. And, you know, to honor that, I believe it appropriate, uh, to make a motion to approve, um, the purchase of the twenty-twenty-two GMC Suburban. The price of up to sixty-one thousand dollars, um, so that, um, undercoating can be done on it. Is there a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes two to one. Oh, and then on the trust fund request for the radios.
Yeah.
That would stay the same.
Yeah. What I didn't understand was the, there's a note that said something about understanding that it'll exceed the current funds.
Ah.
We have utilized the credit with modular to purchase the radio for the utility, that should allow us to return roughly four thousand.
Correct.
So it's gonna come in under?
Under, it'll look like on page, right, at first it'll look like it's more with the quotes, but because we, we can't get the, the credit
Yeah.
and we didn't have it in writing, we, what we have a credit with them, so it'll come in under, well under what we already spent.
Yeah.
So could we do, you have to first spend the money to get the credit?
I think that the, uh, first vehicle's gonna exceed the credit, which is why we came, instead of it being on the, um, utility, it looks like it was seventy-five hundred dollars.
Oh, so that's what, that's what the credit talk was, was on the first vehicle, so then that's gonna come in under, which then will give this enough for the full, if they need this full amount for
Right. Yes.
this outfitting?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
So that credit is in writing?
Yes, we have it, it's not, that's not the issue, is we were just trying to get a total worst cost, uh, cause the issue was the credit came from, I believe, the, uh, repeaters in the trucks.
So then how does that work, does that money get deposited into, back into the capital reserve account?
No, it just won't get expended.
Right.
It won't get billed.
Okay.
They won't send us a dollar for it.
But the town already cut a check for it.
No.
No, the town cuts the check for the actual cost, like whatever that invoice is, and then, um, gets reimbursed from the trustees based on like the actual cost.
The actual invoice.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll see them come through and AP.
Yes, yeah, they'll come through.
So we haven't been billed, just so you guys know, we have not been billed the utility at all, nothing has been billed because the truck isn't, isn't ready for pickup. We don't, we don't get billed until it's built, until it's done.
Alright, yeah, I just, yeah, I appreciate, you know, going back over it again, cause I couldn't, I thought we had already spoken about a credit and, so it was just on that other truck and that's why the money will still be there.
Yep. Correct. And that's why, one of the reasons why we came s- under so far on that truck, um, instead of, we requested eighty-one seventy and I think the, um, actual cost on the, um, truck is, uh, I think around seventy, seventy-eight, something, I had it here.
Seventy-eight, six eighty-two.
I think so.
I wrote it down when you said it last time.
Alright, we'll make a mo- motion to approve the ex- um, expense of up to nine thousand dollars, um, to come from the fire department capital,
Well.
uh, communications capital reserve, um, to equip and install new and used radio in the command vehicle. Is there a second?
Of up to?
Nine thousand.
Just to clarify, the.
The quotes, uh, eighty-six hundred.
The actual cost of the, uh, utility truck is now seventy-one, six fifty-three, just now.
Seventy-one?
Yeah, seventy-one, we had budgeted for eighty-one.
Hmm. Is there a second on my motion?
A second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Radios. All those favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain.
Okay.
So I just, um only because I don't know how this goes, um we go down to look at this vehicle. We get down there, it's everything we we think it is. We come back, then go back down there and give them a check.
I think you'd wanna go.
Go view it.
Well, yeah, but be prepared to buy, you know, to make multiple check, like trips down.
Well, yeah, it's two hundred and twenty miles one way.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not gonna lie, I'm gonna try to see if I can squeeze out free shipping on it, so. Um and that's, that price of sixty grand is without us negotiating anything. That's the at worst cost of the vehicle.
Would you be able to do a video?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Have them direct them with your, with their camera, hey, I wanna see this thing.
Instead of going there, you're saying?
Instead of, just initially.
I I think, they, so they have sent us uh like fifty pictures honestly, a- and and we've seen a lot of it. I think at this time, before I go anywhere, right, before we make any major decision, I think we should view it. If we get down there and we wanna buy it, that's one thing, but I think it needs to be driven and I think it needs to be gone through.
You should be able to get a check from the town.
Yeah.
Made out to this person.
You have the dealership, yep.
And then if you decide no way.
Come back and.
However, if they can talk them down from the sixty thousand.
Yeah.
That's my issue, so I I'd like.
That's.
Can you do that with, can you do?
We can't get a blank check now. It has to, it has to go through AP. It has to go through the whole.
What do you mean? You can't handwrite a check? Well, then the negotiating has to be done beforehand. I can handwrite checks out of my quick notes. And I just input it after I handwrite it.
Are you guys okay if I call them and ask them like, hey, can we put down a deposit if we get down there and we like it?
Yeah.
Then we deposit and we mail you a check for the rest and figure out shipping?
That'd be a basketball, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe even do like a check for fifty thousand, cause I'm sure he's not gonna go down.
Well.
Well, no, no, a deposit of, you know, much less, yeah.
Ten percent.
Whatever, uh whatever they they might do, uh because we can't be the first town that's done this, we go down.
Right.
Whether you negotiate a lower price or not, you know.
Right.
I'd like to try to save even more because it's a used vehicle. I I do believe that this town or this dealership has some wiggle room. They have to. Or they may say no, they may say no, this is it, this is, this is all we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They might be watching this meeting.
They might be.
I know, right? Um.
But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't try.
Yeah, yeah, so call them and find out, you know.
Yeah. What they need, what what's the payment on the need.
If 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 we come down and we wanna buy this, what would you need for a deposit check?
And then figure out. Yeah, figure out trucking, if there is a truck in charge, if there isn't, it's astronomical and fine, we'll just.
Yeah.
Let's go get it, right, but.
Okay.
And that, the point of the deposit would be to allow you to negotiate.
To mail the rest. Yeah.
And secure the vehicle, that they're not gonna sell it to somebody else.
Right, yeah.
I don't think we'll be do that anymore. Hopefully they do. A lot of people are like, nope.
Yeah, we'll know if it's a company and you guys have had pretty good success, you know, getting stuff chopped down, you know, five, ten thousand here and there, so.
No, that would.
Even if it's a hard box, I don't care.
Right?
I I like that thinking.
Yeah.
And not that I'm like.
Right.
Woo-hoo, yay, we saved a hundred dollars to the, but across the board, that kind of thinking is good for the people. So.
Alright.
Well, I'll get back to you, Jason, on what they say in the morning, just kinda keep you in the loop as to follow what we're doing and.
Yeah, it's.
That way the select board is.
Yeah, I mean, I probably won't talk to him till next week, but you can even email.
Yeah.
If you ever want, you can email all of us, what we do is we just BCC.
Okay.
Have you done that?
Um.
So that way there, we don't start a conversation and.
Right.
And that'd be great.
Okay.
BCC all of us. We can just follow your progress.
Email Debbie directly and then BCC.
And I can be, I can be CC.
Yeah, okay.
If I feel like doing it, whatever.
Yeah, that works good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Anything else?
Nope.
Alright, thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for the work.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much for improving it. I'll see you guys later.
Yeah.
Good night. So, uh old new business. Do you have anything for this evening, Lou?
No.
Debbie?
Um. We need to schedule those public hearings I sent out on for the auction stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there were three pieces of land that were not tax-deeded, so apparently there's a different procedure you have to do, so we have to get planning board and conservation approval or recommendation for it, and then hold a public hearing, then seven to fourteen days later, hold another public hearing. And then seven days after that, have a meeting to vote to authorize the sale. And then the meeting goes.
I thought that was only if it was in a trust.
No, that's, that's if it wasn't tax-deeded. You're talking about a whole nother thing. The antique fire brigade building. You gotta do that too, but we have to do that side parade thing for that, but um so I was thinking if we had the first public hearing on the twenty-first of October and then the second on the twenty-eighth of October and then the to the vote on November fourth, that would still give us time to close. Um I forget what date they wrote down. It was mid-November.
Hmm.
Um and it would still give the planning board and the conservation commission a couple of weeks to give their recommendation.
November twelfth, I think it was, something like that. November twelfth?
Yeah, something like that.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, so have you prepared anything yet for uh the planning and?
Yeah, I sent, I sent everything to them.
Hmm? What's in process?
So does that work? The twenty-first, the twenty-eighth, and November fourth?
Yeah, the twenty-first. We had a couple of things.
Oh.
Potential, but that was potentials.
Yeah, potential or potentially not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Alright.
Cause we usually like to have the public hearings at seven.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have we heard anything from um regarding the highway garage?
Yes, I emailed JD Matt and he had said to me that he needed a couple of weeks because he had to get with the DES and um that other, used to be ransom, now it's pension or whatever. Um to to get all the options that we were asking about, of doing a lot line adjustment or just selling it outright to them or keeping it or whatever. Um he just got back to me today because I put a little, I emailed him yesterday and said, hey, what's going on with that? It's been two weeks. And he said he's gonna need another couple of weeks because he hasn't been able to between him and them being so busy, he hasn't been able to get uh an outline for us. So he asked to give him another couple of weeks.
And with the auction, uh we had a very successful auction um Saturday morning. Uh the property on Andrew Drive, uh top bidder, you know, came in at a hundred thousand dollars. Um Wheeler Road, it was sixty-four thousand dollars. Um High Bridge Road. That nice little lot down by the river, two thousand dollars, the high bidder on that. Um the pro- uh map one lot seven, uh Turnpike Road, that was fifty-two thousand five hundred. And map eleven lot fifty um was five hundred bucks. So all bids were, came in over, um what was out in taxes and um we feel, you know, went very well that day. And I think the uh schedule is pretty tight, so we don't have too much wiggle room on those dates, right, the twenty-first and the.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be what it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And I said, uh, Autumn Fest.
Hmm.
Saturday, already. That's eleven to four. Um parade lineup's gonna start at ten AM and step off from Boyton. And also parade lineup starts at nine, or step off from Boyton at ten. Um for the, that long walk down to the park, but everybody should be down and assembled um at the park by eleven. Um as a part of Autumn, Autumn Fest, we were looking, uh brought this up a couple of weeks ago, uh but to do you know, selectmen addresses, if you guys wanted to speak in it, were you gonna be around Saturday or no? No.
No.
Alright.
So it would be as part of Autumn Fest?
Yep.
As part of the two seventy-fifth.
Yeah, around, we're at two seventy-fifth at one thirty. Sorry, Autumn Fest and two seventy-fifth this year is all together in my brain, but.
Together but separate. Sprinkled.
Yeah, sprinkled, yeah.
And then, yeah, could I?
Yep.
How did you have that?
Just got it today.
Put it off the press.
Yeah.
At one thirty.
Mm-hmm.
There's a thirty-minute lull in activities, so one thirty to two, so you have to be done by two.
What? Only a half hour?
Yeah.
We gotta share a half hour?
Yep.
I think it can be done.
What should the topic be on? Two hundred and seventieth anniversary?
Yeah, I'm not, you could probably, you know, dig deep into the historical bowels and.
I am a hobbyist historian, I'm not a true historian, so I can.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can hit on that line if, I don't know what you were thinking of.
Yeah, I was thinking more of like a a general message, you know, the community and, you know, two hundred and seventy-five years of, you know, being a town, like townspeople.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I'd like if you could incorporate one of your, uh some of your sentiments in letters.
Okay.
About.
I'm sure that'll be in there too.
Self-governance and.
Peppered in.
Independence.
Sprinkled in.
Sprinkle it in.
Yeah.
Though I can lean more towards the historical end.
Okay.
I plan on that one thirty.
Yep.
Alright. If anyone watching has anything they'd like to see incorporated or if you'd like to take our place.
Alright, yeah, I'd have to. It's funny when you uh put the microv- microphone out there, so many people just run away.
That is the temptation, but we can muscle through.
Yeah. Yep. That's a, uh, pretty good lineup for the day. Um sounds like we have quite a bit of uh parade participation. Um.
Yeah, I had a new float today and a new, another new one yesterday.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So now I think we're up to eight or nine floats.
Yeah, now the keen marching band and then I'm sorry, you're the.
Yeah. Civil Air Patrol.
Civil Air Patrol.
Civil Air Patrol, yeah.
For a color guard.
That'll be excellent, yeah. So, uh it'll be a really nice day and then um we're gonna ride it out with fireworks at seven thirty in the evening uh at Messinic High School. Uh with the spectator viewing at the Messinic um field hockey field and soccer field. And parking in the lower parking lots at High Bridge and uh Messinic. So the first fireworks will be going off at seven thirty, so you're gonna get there a little bit earlier than that uh to get settled, because it's a little bit of hike up onto the hill. And we have uh three musicians coming as well. Uh Jimbo LaBelle, Jamie Hughes, and Rich Hamilton. But I'm not sure of what types of music they play exactly, um but, you know, we'd asked for, you know, kinda like that easy-going folksy music, so um hoping the schedule is stuck to that. Or it could be just some heavy metal going on, who knows?
Either way.
Yeah, right? And then also on stage, we'll have uh Andrew Schu- Schumaz, um who's gonna be sponsored by the Sterns Burton uh lecture fund. Um and will be giving uh oral history on uh instruments and music um to some degree and playing for us as well. So, you know, thank you for the Sterns Burton uh lecture fund for, you know, sponsoring that uh artist.
And Cos McKelley.
Oh, they ca- they took care of Cos McKelley too?
Mm-hmm, that's in there.
Yeah, no, I didn't know Sterns Burton.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, no, I just recognize in Sterns Burton specifically.
Yeah, I thought you were moving on to same one.
Nope, then we're gonna have uh t-shirts for sale and uh ornaments as well. Uh they have.
Commemorative ornaments, yep.
And could be kinda neat, you know, we haven't, you know, spoken as a a group, but uh maybe to roll this over into the Fourth, Fourth of July for next year, like any excess funds. Um figure out a way to get that to them somehow. Um or however it has to be handled, so. Love to see, but that's kinda like the intent, you know, so that it can go forward to the next celebration point and hopefully that'll be uh this year's Fourth of July.
Cool.
Yeah. Alright, that's all I had.
How are you getting around the um the fire ban, uh fire ban?
Not getting around it, still subject to it, uh but it's uh mortars that go up three to four hundred feet, I believe they had said. It's all um authorized by the state. Uh so all the smaller ground type fireworks uh pose more of a fire hazard.
Right.
Um so they, the state says you need to use certain types of fireworks in certain conditions.
Okay.
Um and that the day of, say, we get, you know, sixty, seventy mile per hour winds locally, uh we may not be able to do it like at that point, you know, because uh ultimately uh the fire department on the ground um can make the call if they feel that the conditions aren't right. Um and the state not necessarily seeing it, so there's many uh checkpoints involved. And it's uh not random people, fire technics.
Yeah. Not a competition.
Yeah. Yeah, so it should uh be a really good big display. Yeah. If we can have it, and if we can't have it, uh we can postpone it and, you know, maybe make another micro event out of it, you know, when the conditions get more favorable, but
No, it is.
It will be happening, yeah.
Yeah.
So this family portrait, how does there was talk of it um being like period? Is that still on or is it just?
No, so it's uh families currently. Yeah, so the period pictures were when uh we did the lunch out at uh Bear House.
Oh, the picnic at the Bear House.
Yeah. Uh yeah, there hasn't been too many people um that had signed up for that, yeah, definitely.
For this.
And but and still as part of the history of New Ipswich, you know what I mean? So you know how they, they have all those old-fashioned pictures from back in the day, whatever, of families together? So we wanted to, not time capsule, but kinda.
Oh, that's what that was for?
No, this, this coming up now is like current day family, however you dressed, whatever.
Hmm.
And would still go into like the Historical Society or the, you know, these pictures would.
Hmm.
As part of the history, so another hundred.
And the record of the day, yeah.
And another two hundred and seventy-five years that can.
Should have like the Taffey family, everybody.
Right.
Somero.
Every Taffey, every Somero.
Everybody.
I don't think there's a wide angle lens that's big enough to do that. You'd have to panorama.
I didn't really highlight this, um because I wasn't sure the direction that uh Emery wanted to kinda take it on, um. So I've come up with more definitive guidelines, maybe even for Saturday, because I know that we had spoken about people submitting their own photos as well.
Yeah.
Their own family portraits.
Yeah, if you have a family portrait, you can submit those.
Hmm.
And this would be, where would it go? To the Historical Society?
Yeah, uh well, Emery, you know, compile it.
Yeah.
Um and, you know, we're gonna work on putting together some type of post. Um and, you know, we're gonna work on putting together some type of post. Like all the different celebrations that we had done uh this year.
Right.
So maybe making like a little booklet.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Possibly, yeah.
Like a book.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not eight uh V H Ss like I saw the uh two fiftieth, but.
Yeah.
We do have a few of them.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
Hundred fiftieth.
Yep.
Hundred tenth.
So I'll have another uh book for the collection.
No. Good.
Yeah. Yeah, and uh more clarity of what and how to submit things and how it'll be compiled. It was just something that had been spoken about for this day the whole time, and then just the details kinda.
Changed, morphed.
Yeah, yep. So those uh flyers will be the out and about, um.
Yeah, there's a couple in the lobby, we'll put them on the website. I think it's on the rack desk.
Hmm.
And I think Jane, I think, yeah, I think Fa- Facebook.
Facebook. Hmm.
Someone t-shirt, so we already said that.
Thanks.
We got cake.
Oh, and that's not it, um last week's agenda, we had Bob Romerl penciled in. Was there something that you wanted to speak about, or?
Um, no, he didn't. He, he said he'd come back, he didn't have the information he needed or something.
Okay, alright.
So he'll let me know.
Alright. Cool. So I'm not forgetting, 'cause he had chatted with me, children's fair day too, and said that he was, wanted to come in, so.
Yeah.
Alright.
Jason?
No. No, no.
Alright, I have a couple things that I'm gonna be forwarding um through email, like that I got from uh Dee uh regarding some house bills that are being presented, but it's a lot to go through and a lot to read through, um.
Those bills that passed?
No, things that they're considering right now.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, and uh how will it impact us, um like with building on private roads? Um allowances for third-party building, third-party building code inspectors.
Mm.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, those are kinda some neat stuff, Anne Moore thing she said, so.
Yeah, there's a lot going on now.
As, as she sees it, and as she has time, she's gonna try to
Send it.
Yeah, send it down so that we're aware of it. Which made me think of too, the um, our state reps. What was that?
Yeah, I was thinking about that the other day too.
Can't remember, it was right around now where we had them kinda penciled in to come back, I thought. In September, October, yeah.
Yeah. I'll send it.
We'll look back on the notes, yeah. Do you have anything, Debbie?
No.
Do you have anything for us, Alan, this evening? Hmm? So, uh, thanks for tuning in, we got a few non-publics to conduct, which we want.